Okay, I'm calling to order a meeting of the North Woodby Park and Recreation District in Oak Harbor School District Boardroom at 5:08 PM on June 22nd. Present are Commissioner Frasch, Commissioner Singleton, Commissioner Hawley, Commissioner Fort, and Commissioner Hofmeyer. First item on the agenda, we have two motions that were tabled from a previous meeting. First motion that we're going to talk about, and I will say each motion that we talk about, we're going to have every Commissioner will have two, we're going to go around the circle, everyone will have two comments, two abilities to comment, and no more than 10 minutes per your session. Okay, first motion, I move that we dissolve the North Woodby Aquatic Club effective August 15th, 2017. This was moved and seconded. Discussion starting with Commissioner Singleton.
First, Madam Chair, I would, I move to amend the motion to include and masters. So to read, I move that we dissolve the North Woodby Aquatic Club and masters effective August 15th, 2017.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we dissolve the North Woodby Aquatic Club and masters effective August 15th, 2017. So discussion, Commissioner Singleton.
Yes, Madam Chair. So, a quick addition exercise with the draft maintenance plan reveals that in the next six years, our district will require approximately $350,000 of known maintenance. A portion of another $230,000 of TBD items can also be expected to fall into that timeframe. Keep in mind that this 350 to 580,000 dollar range includes no actual improvements whatsoever. This is maintenance only. Our $60,000 of reserves and approximately $30,000 budget line item for maintenance annually will not cover these needs, so serious action must be taken. We cannot ignore what is on the horizon. We have a responsibility to the taxpayers as the stewards of this district's funds and its assets. This measure alone will not be enough, but it is a needed step on the path to district wellness. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frasch?
Can you start with Commissioner Hofmeyer, please?
Okay, Commissioner Hofmeyer.
First off, it really, really, really bothers me that we're here. Fifty-two weeks ago nearly to the day, the director put forward his three-year vision for INWAC at the request of the board. In that, in that 52 weeks, in spite of all of this that has came from this board, that swim team has grown 33 percent. The executive director says that the swim team is operating with a $5,000 a year profit. You know, all while, meanwhile, you know, lap swimming, for instance, loses nearly $70,000 a year. It seemed like the board loosely endorsed the director's vision, and something has changed because over the last year, INWAC has been under constant attack. So it seemed like the director was under, you know, heavy direction to mirror Anna Kordis or Fadago's model, which is exactly what he brought forward at the last meeting. It was voted against, and there was a pre-prepared motion to dissolve INWAC that immediately followed. It's clear as hell that the reason this board wants to go that way, if that is their decision, is because they know that they will lose control of this board in November. What has happened is not right. Even though I think the current INWAC model is the right way to go, any model is better than dissolving it. And if somebody has their preferred math to keep the club, then I would obviously be in the camp to have to support that math. So, a revenue neutral, in the board's mind, a revenue neutral business model to operate INWAC, you know, I think we're very close to that, you know, probably within a few thousand dollars even in the board's mind. So the question I have is, so, we dissolve INWAC, you know, we've dissolved INWAC, which is revenue neutral, or we can make it revenue neutral in our minds, and I would have to support that, and that's fine, I'm on the record. If somebody has their preferred math, that they feels revenue neutral, even profitable, I'll support that. So we can go that route. Or we can dissolve the swim club. We can hurt 50 families, you know? Most people here read the paper. So they called the cops on me, point of order, I guess to the chair. So the board called the cops on me at the last meeting because I said that a couple board members were horrible people, I think is what it was. Anybody that's watched over the last year knows that I've been called a lot more names. You know, last weekend at Little League tournament, the Andretti tournament, it's been in town for years, I had people coming up to me I've never met in my life thanking me for standing up for the children of this district. Some of the words used were brave, heroic. No, they weren't, I was just myself. I'm going to say what I think, and I'm always going to fight for the children of this district, whether they're my kid or not. Here's some more of the comments that I've gotten through emails, et cetera. Let the children keep this needed outlet in our small, beautiful community. Save the swim team. I think it's fantastic that kids have the opportunity to engage in this activity. INWAC is an important youth activity in our community. Time and time again, INWAC has met the demands of the board, and yet you refuse to work with them. Keep INWAC going, do not close it. We need to continue this program as it's a positive program for our youth and community. Keep Oak Harbor great. There is so little available for kids to participate in and be active year-round in Oak Harbor, it would be such a shame to do anything to take any of those healthy, productive activities away. Please keep the swim team. Competitive swim is an important option for children of Woodby Island. I call on the North Woodby Park and Recreation District Board of Commissioners to continue to operate the North Woodby Aquatic Club program as a competitive and professionally-coached program for the benefit of current and future children and families living in or near the district. The island needs this resource desperately for our children. INWAC is an important part of competitive swimming in our northwest corner. One of its best, one of, one of the best sports for military families, as it's transferable when moving to a new home. A critical opponent for any aquatic program. Every one of those paragraphs were from a different constituent within this district. And I can go on and on and on, hundreds of emails that I've received supporting INWAC, not one saying that they don't. And so I said, I'll speak my mind, I'll say what I have to say, and I have. And I will fight for the children of this district, and so will the people of this town. I seen that when they bought this building. I seen it when the people of this town passed a levy to build a football stadium for 50 kids to play in year-round. This community supports its youth over all else. They always have, always will. So somebody can bring forward their preferred math that beats the hell out of dissolution of a team. You know, a team that has let so many kids go on to full scholarships and be productive in this community, or to go on to West Point. To West Point, several kids in the last few years alone because of INWAC, because of INWAC. Not because some letter from their congressman, not because their dad was the Commodore of the base, because of INWAC. To take that away from this community would be ludicrous. So a revenue neutral business model can be put forward, and we can keep INWAC for the next generation of children that are turning out the fastest record times they've ever turned out. We can move forward with revenue business neutral, or we can dissolve INWAC, and we can look at what the unemployment costs are for the director, or for the, for the swim coach, excuse me. So revenue neutral, or we can lose a lot of money over the next six months to a year, however far this goes. I don't know what the unemployment cost can go, but I know that with the North Woodby Parks and Recreation District being a junior taxing district, we are an exempt employer. We don't pay into unemployment insurance. Every penny of that unemployment will come right out of our pocket. I see that I have three and a half minutes of my initial 10 minutes remaining, and I would like to yield the floor to the executive director and inquire about what the unemployment cost would most likely be.
Yes.
Okay, um, I want to go fast. Um, well, I remember the number off the top of my head, but it's, it's based, I won't go through the math, because y'all have a, I sent out a thing that has all the calculations in it, but it's between $11,000 and $12,000 for a six-month period is what it would be. I don't remember the exact number, but it's between $11,000 and $12,000 that you have to pay. It's, it's 400, it's based on our calculation, working with the folks down in Tacoma, it's $456 and some change a week is what I would agree with.
So, seeing that, I support the current business model, but I'm not going to take my marbles and go home. If anybody here has preferred math or a preferred business model that they think makes INWAC more revenue neutral or more profitable, then I will support that. That's what we're here to do, we're here to compromise. You know, there was a nice piece in the paper, I seen an opinion piece, and I, I don't think there's much quotable out of there usually, but it was, it was very fair. Okay, I don't know how good it made me look about the last meeting, but I don't care. Like I said, I'm going to say what I have to say. But it encouraged us all to come to a compromise and save the swim team for these 50 children. This isn't, oh, I got my way, we dissolved INWAC tonight, I'm going to go have a wine with the former executive director. No, that's not what this is about. It's how we can serve every group of people within this community. I don't have a kid on the swim team. I'm embarrassed to say he's 11 years old and he don't know how to swim, but we're, we're working on it. And that's what, that's another reason we have the poll. I don't have no family on INWAC. I work 50 hours a week, I work from 7:00 in the morning until 5:00 o'clock at night, and the second I get off, the second I get off, I coach baseball from 5:00 to 8:30 at night. There's so much better stuff I could do than to be sitting here arguing over the last year about preserving something for children. It shouldn't be an argument. I'll, I'll save my, the rest of my comments for the end.
Thank you. Commissioner Fort?
For me, it is a matter of fairness for the majority of district taxpayers. While all other non-high school youth sports programs operate using volunteer coaches, perhaps sometimes supplemented with other teaching experiences paid by their team parents, North Woodby Park and Recreation District has been spending about 10% of the MNO levy annually for the INWAC swim coach, coaching staff. If we had spent, not spent, approximately $300,000 for the swim team coaching costs during the six years of the current MNO levy from 2012 to 2017, we would not have drained our reserve account. We would still have the reserve funds needed for repairs, and might have been able to lower the upcoming levy rate request from 17 cents per thousand to perhaps 16 cents per thousand. I would have preferred to have the North Woodby Park and Recreation District Board of Commissioners eliminate the full-time coaching position. The INWAC swim team would decide if they want to operate like every other youth sports program in the district with volunteer coaches, they could pay for a part-time coach if they desired, rent lane hours needed for practices, and swim meets like high school swim team. But I've been told the North Woodby Park and Recreation District Board of Commissioners cannot eliminate the full-time coach position. Only the director can make this recommendation. So eliminating the North Woodby Park and Recreation District's support for the current INWAC swim team system is the only option for eliminating the 10% per year spent from the MNO levy on the full-time INWAC swim coach position. I do not feel that all other youth sports programs in the district are less competitive, useful, or beneficial than INWAC. The process of trying to decrease the swim team's drain on the MNO levy and district reserves began in 2012. The newly hired director noticed a large deficit between the swim team's contributions and expenses. The director suggested the swim team should increase its contributions over the next couple of years to significantly decrease the subsidy from the MNO levy. Until 18 months, the last 18 months, the majority of the INWAC, or North Woodby Park and Recreation District Board of Commissioners has been INWAC swim team relatives and master swim team members. The swim team parents have made some concessions in the years since 2012, but have been unwilling to significantly decrease their taxpayer-funded subsidy. For this reasons, I will support the current proposal. It is unfortunately the only way to significantly decrease the large taxpayer-funded subsidy to the swim team.
Done. Thank you. Commissioner Frasch, you ready?
Yeah, can we go?
No, okay, if you're going to skip your first one, that's fine.
No, yeah. I'll start my first one here.
Okay.
Okay. I'm hearing everything about how much it costs to run the INWAC. I'm single, I don't have a kid, I don't have what? I've never swam before. I mean, I know how to swim, I don't swim professionally for, in a team. Now, what I've, what I have done in my youth was, I played baseball, I played soccer, football, pretty much all the other sports other than swimming. Now, that itself right there provided me with the outlet to burn off energy as a kid, to stay out of trouble as a kid. In a city that was a lot of people and a lot of crime, if I didn't have any outlet like that for myself to do, then I would probably, would have gotten in trouble with the law. Now, okay, if we have other places in here, like the baseball team that is not funded, okay, if we have, do we have a soccer team, we probably have other teams over here that are not funded by any type of taxpayers' money. Okay, but what I see is, we get rid of something like this, yes, it's going to cost a little bit of money for the taxpayers to pay for a coach or a swim team, a little bit of money. But I'd rather have to pay that little bit of money per, 17 cents per thousand, how much of that 17, 17 cents is going to go into the pool for the program? That's at very little, very little money to spend on just one kid, to keep him out of trouble. Now, I've been doing some research on how much it costs to send a kid to juvenile home, to detention, to get, to have, police arrest somebody, process them, keep them in jail for extended amount of time. Just one day, one day is, with all the costs, with the labor, the police, feeding them, housing them in jail, processing all the, the facilities that the police have to do, it's going to cost at least $2,500 a day for one kid. We got 50 kids in the swim team, right? Roughly 50 kids, okay? Just one kid, right now, they go up, they, they don't go to swimming, they get in trouble, they get in trouble, say, for a month. How much is that per month for a kid that be in jail? It's not only going to hurt taxpayer money, because guess who's paying for the jail? Who's, guess who's paying for the prison? With all that other stuff, okay, so, we're spending all this money, now it's, it's, the swim coach has got to find another job. That's causing more unemployment right there. Guess where unemployment comes from? Taxpayers. Hell, I don't like paying taxes to anybody more than anybody else, but I still pay taxes, and I want my voice heard saying, hey, I care about what, where my taxes are going, and if it's 17 cents out of $1,000 out of my paycheck, I want something like this to go to somewhere where it's going to benefit the community, because crime increases, hey, we're in a military town. Anybody not agree with me that this is not a military town? Got 10, 10,000 military, 10,000 plus, and increasing right now. The more crime it is, guess what's going to happen? More police, more money's going to happen. Now we're increasing taxes because now we have to increase the police force. Now we have to increase all but some other things that are related to crime. And we're worried about $37,000 for the coaches' pay? Is that what it is? $48,000 for a coach's pay?
Salary.
Salary, okay. Who gives a crap? That's one kid getting in trouble for two months. Do the math right there. I gotta tell you, I don't know anybody else here that has kids, I'm pretty sure the, the other board members has kids over here. I don't know what the situation is. If you don't have kids, that's fine. I don't have kids. But I don't want to be living in the city that got rid of a program that is going to cause more crime because we got rid of a program like this. It's unfair to everybody. Oh, it's not funded, every other program's not funded. That's because the other programs don't want to fund it, because they're not going to the board saying, hey, we want money for this right here. We want our tax money to go into this program. Does the baseball team do that? No? Does the baseball team do that? Do they actually go to the parks and recs and say, hey, we want money for that?
I mean, it's kind of, question?
Yes.
I mean, it's kind of convoluted in a way, I mean, there's, there's 10, 10 baseball fields that the Little League uses, there's another 10 practice fields that the Little League uses, at no cost. Sure, the, the coaches volunteer for, you know, this is All-Stars, so it's a very brief 30 hours a week, three weeks. In general, it's 15 hours a week, but it's only a couple months a year.
Yes.
And here's the thing, I, I have the skill to be a, to be a very good baseball coach or basketball coach or football coach. I don't know how to teach my kid how to swim. It, it's so uniquely different. And there's nobody out there that's going to be able to volunteer 65 hours a week like Coach Taylor does, and that has the skill he has. And I don't want to eat into any more of your time, but, but it's, you're comparing things that are incomparable. Nobody's going to drown down on a baseball field.
Exactly. So with the swim team, dissolve the swim team, that is going to get rid of a value program, and it's going to cause a lot of issues right there. I have not still heard any evidence to the contrary to saying, hey, the baseball teams are complaining about INWAC, or anybody else. I see the swim team here saying, hey, we want this program, we're complaining because we're trying, the board is trying to get rid of it. I don't hear anything from the complaint against the INWAC. And the board still has not proven to anyone that it is, people are complaining about it. So it's beyond my reach of why the hell you want to get rid of a program like this. Let me end right there.
Done, okay. When I joined the Board of Commissioners in October 2014, I did what I always did when I went to a new command in the Navy. I reviewed the organizational structure, budget, bylaws, and other paperwork, and I walked around and talked to the people that ran the place, as well as other citizens who are familiar with issues of the district. It became quickly obvious to me that there were serious budget issues and maintenance concerns. Other than Commissioner Singleton, who was also brand-new to the board, the rest of the board was apparently still reeling from the turmoil that had been taking place for the past two years or so, and did not share my concerns. Not involved myself with that turmoil, I knew the most important thing for the district was to figure out how we would pay the half a million dollar maintenance bill that was looming on the horizon, since we only had $75,000 in reserve and did not seem capable of building that reserve up with the current spending rate. The answer was obvious to me, increase revenue and decrease costs. I was also not sure why the parents of the swim club were not responsible for all expenses of the swim club. That made no sense to me. Because that's the way it's always been done is never a good answer for me. I did not come in and immediately try to sweep a new broom, I did what I always do, I researched and questioned. I talked to several directors of community fitness centers. Commissioner Singleton and I looked at most of the programs of the district. When you look at direct expense of a program which includes the cost of the coach and direct revenue, without even figuring in some cost for lane usage or opportunity cost for the open swim fees we would have garnered, INWAC cost this district, cost the taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars a year. Let me repeat that, tens of thousands of dollars a year, that could have been going into the reserve for the maintenance that is coming due. It also must be mentioned that the reserve was reportedly $200,000 in 2010, 2011, and is now down to less than $64,000. Is that all due to spending too much on INWAC? No, there have been other areas, I'm told, but tens of thousands of dollars a year spent on a program that benefits less than 50 children is not the right place to put that money when there is a leaking roof, aging boilers, and a building that is 35 years old, not when their parents should be paying those expenses. I am on the Board of Commissioners of the North Woodby Park and Recreation District. I represent the district in 2017, but I also represent it for 2020 and 2050. It is my responsibility to plan for the future of this district and to conserve the facilities that were built by our families, and that includes mine back in 1980. As we've tried to work with the director and INWAC, the pushback on them paying all expenses was so hard, it has been painfully obvious that they will never agree to that. I met with one of the swim dads last October, and he specifically told me, we will not pay all the expenses. The plan the director and INWAC parents came up with, and which we discussed at the last meeting, diverted funds from the school district away from the entire park and rec district to pay for the INWAC swim coach. This in future years would be at least $13,000 deficit in district income, another $13,000 that cannot be put toward maintenance because of the cost of the INWAC swim coach that the parents are unable or unwilling to assume for themselves. This has not come quickly, as with all wrenching changes, it has been approached slowly and carefully, as it should be. But it has been two and a half years. The INWAC parents very obviously feel entitled to have a professional swim coach for their children to be paid for by their neighbors. Unfortunately, I had to conclude that the only answer therefore is to divest the district of the program entirely, and allow these parents to set up their own program that they can afford, whatever that might be. I believe I speak for the majority of the taxpayers in this district. We need the pool facility to be maintained properly for all people in the district. INWAC parents, you need to pay for your kids' extracurricular activities. It's really all about the maintenance. Okay, second comment. Commissioner Singleton?
Okay, thank you. So, to me, the question is if we want to have a community pool in five years, and if so, then I believe this action, among others, is needed. When, when I was sworn into office the second time, Sheila Kreider, who is the county auditor, and a very delightful and knowledgeable woman, if you don't have, not have a chance to meet her, she spoke about our legal obligation to, and I'm paraphrasing, but to protect and preserve the assets of the district. She meant it very seriously, and I took it very seriously. And despite any other dispersions to the contrary, this isn't a celebration for anyone. It's, if the motion passes, it's, it's, it's seen as, by myself, it's seen as something that's necessary. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hofmeyer?
First of all, I know Sheila Kreider, and talk with Sheila Kreider quite a bit, consider her a friend. I personally don't, I don't appreciate her name being associated with any of this mess. Sheila Kreider has nothing to do with this, other than she was shocked that I ran again, and thought, wow, glutton for punishment. But I'm not walking away from nothing. You know, a, a few things that, that came up as we went around, you know, one, one person mentioned their time in the Navy, and, you know, the interesting thing is, I'm not in the Navy, I never have been in the Navy, looking at age and coming up, I never will be in the Navy. I have a lot of friends who are, also can read the newspaper, watch TV. The Navy realized that they were, that they were really erring, you know, that they weren't put in their families first. And over the last 10, 15 years, it's been nice to see the family correct that, and put family services first, and realize that there's more than what the numbers on the paper look like. You know, there's another thing that was brought up, was a commissioner said that they, they would support this motion because it's the only option. No, it's not. Whatever option you think is preferable is the option. I went on the record and said that I will support your preferred business model. I also believe that Commissioner Frasch feels that any motion, any business model would be better than the dissolution of, and I would assume he would support it as well. That's three votes. No, this is not the only option. We can take care of this at the next regular meeting, I will support your business model. We can schedule a special meeting if we need to. We can get this dealt with in the next few weeks. And I think that it could pass unanimously, and to finally put this thing to rest, because the route we're going down, this is the route we're going down, this is ugly. The military people are already voting, absentee ballot. All of us will be voting by mail in a few weeks. Look at it, what has went on over the last year? Seventeen cents per thousand? I don't know who the hell would give us seventeen cents. This has been ridiculous. Attack after attack after attack. You know, and to say that N-WAC is losing tens of thousands of dollars a year, there's no, there's... I, I think that's pretty stilted math, in my opinion. But tens of thousands of dollars, even if it were, you know, we're on the path to correcting that, to the point to where the director said that it made five-thousand dollars last year, and the board accused that math of being stilted. May, 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 maybe the truth is somewhere in the middle. Can't we meet there in the middle? But say it lost ten-thousand dollars a year. Tens of thousands of dollars a year, whatever tens is, ten, twenty, thirty, the math is clear to me that it's not near that. Fifty kids. Yes, fifty unique kids, every year different, a different fifty, every year. Kids come in and kids go. Lap swimming, lost seventy-thousand dollars last year, and there was only ninety, nine, there was only ninety unique lap swimmers throughout the entire year. I've already talked about how much I feel this community supports the youth. We can meet in the middle, we can put together a business model that all of us say is revenue-neutral. Or, you know, we have kids that have worked for years to get to the record times they're setting, for years to get to meets, and, and we're just gonna take that away from them. Here it is, June, June 27th, and we're gonna tell them that August 1st, that's gone? The levy will not pass in August if that happens. The levy will not pass in November if that happens. And at that point, we won't be able to run another maintenance and operations levy for twelve months by law. The pool will not sustain past February 1, if the board goes down this road tonight, this road tonight, no way, no how. So, no, this is not the only option. Any option is better than this option. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Fort.
Frequently, N-WAC supporters have used and continue to use obfuscation, belittling, attempted humiliation, and intimidation.
We're not, we're trying to get personalities, try not to do that.
All you have to do is review the past budgets on the North Whidby Park and Recreation District website to see that the yearly swim deficit over contributions has been thirty-to-fifty-thousand dollars a year, including unpaid lap time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Frosch.
The way I see it is, N-WAC gets dissolved, I agree with Commissioner Hoffmeyer, levy's not gonna pass. I still have not seen any proof that it's going to do anything. We can do budgets, we can do numbers, any way that we want to favor or to not favor anything. Seeing all these budgets right there? I'm not good at math. I hate math. Anybody could do numbers to make it look good or look bad. The way I see it, we pass this motion, fifty, uh, fifty kids are gonna lose out on great, great opportunity, and then that's gonna continue on the next year, and next year, and next year. I, I, I like that Commissioner Hoffmeyer mentioned the Navy. As retired Navy myself, I know how big that the Navy is correcting the way it is, used to be. I was in Navy twenty years. When I first got in there, Navy really didn't give a crap about the family or the kids. They didn't have any programs. Now, the Navy has funded a lot of their operational costs to take care of the family. Why? If you don't take care of the family, you're not taking care of the member. If you don't take care of the member, are they gonna work for you? Same thing here. If you are, have somebody that is doing a program like this, and it ceases to exist, like the board is trying to do right now, that's gonna cause a lot of issues. Taxpayers are gonna be mad. Kids are gonna be mad. Personally, I don't think the pool's gonna survive if we do this. So, you either come to a happy medium, or this board is gonna make the North Whidby Park and Recreational District fail. Your choice.
Done?
Yep.
Okay. Um, this community is too small for this program. We don't have the tax base to support the taxpayers paying for this, not, and to keep the maintenance up. And, I'm sorry, I think the kids that wanna swim will find a way to swim, their parents will pay for it. You just need to pay more. Thank you. All right, uh, I think we're ready to vote on it. So, motion is that we dissolve the North Whidby Aquatic Club and Masters effective August 15th, 2017. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
And the chair agrees with the ayes. The ayes have it, we will do a by name. Commissioner Frosch?
Nay.
Commissioner Singleton?
Aye.
Commissioner Fort?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Aye.
And the chair, Commissioner Holly, votes aye. It passes. North Whidby Aquatic Club and Masters will be dissolved effective August 15th, 2017. Next item on the agenda: I move that we have the executive director prepare alternatives for a non-competitive swim team program in 2018 for presentation by the September regular meeting. Uh, and that was seconded. So, Commissioner Singleton, you wanna talk about that one?
So, Madam Chair, um, I would like to amend that motion to substitute recreation for a non-competitive.
Okay.
So, I can reread it. Um, I move that we have the executive director prepare alternatives for a recreation swim team program in 2018 for presentation by the September regular meeting.
Okay, do I have a second on that change, that amendment?
A second.
Okay. So, it's a move and seconded that we have the executive director prepare alternatives for a recreation swim team program in 2018 for presentation by the September regular meeting. Discussion, Commissioner Singleton.
Yes. Um, I, I believe, uh, this requesting an assessment will, uh, help us determine whether a program accessible by more community members is feasible. I am hoping for a program with a limited timeframe, informal competitive opportunities, a truly affordable price point, and a balanced budget. In other words, I am hoping for a program that models recreation swim programs in other communities and other recreation sports in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffmeyer.
Yeah, you know, it was asked my expertise with being involved in sports around here, and I have been quite a bit, um, so, so I'll share some of my knowledge on non-competitive sports programs, be it from the North Whidby Park and Recreation District's attempt at a, a non-competitive soccer club, didn't work. Non-competitive running club, didn't work. North Whidby Little League, and they got, what, five hundred kids that participate in swing, spring ball, when, when the weather's miserable outside. Be it September, August timeframe, when the weather's beautiful, fall ball, non-competitive. She's lucky if they can get twenty kids to play, and they're not dedicated, they don't show up to practice, they quit by the end of the season usually. Kids need competition, whether it's in school, or whether it's an organized sport. So, some attempt to save face at something that we all know wouldn't work. What would it be? Lap swimming? Lap swimming lost seventy-thousand dollars last year. Let's go that route. That sounds really smart. Commissioner Frosch is the only board member here worth even talking to.
Okay, if you're gonna, do not make comments like that, thank you.
Fine.
Remember?
If the newspaper feels like there's one thing worth reporting here, I hope that it's, that N-WAC is very valued by most members of this community, and the price difference to continue it is rather negligible. And I pray that members within the business community can step up and, and help carry N-WAC until there's a new board in November. This storm will pass, the levy has to pass. The levy has to pass. We live on an island surrounded by water. Kids have to learn how to swim. So, you know, on behalf of the nastiness of the last year, I, 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 I hope that that doesn't dissuade anybody from voting to support the John Van Der Zijck Memorial Pool, because it's a very needed thing within the community, a- as is N-WAC. But I would say this, you know, there's certain board members that think that N-WAC's lost twenty-thousand dollars a year.
Okay, remember what the topic is? You need to refer to the topic is?
Yes.
An alternative to a recreation swim team. That is not on topic.
I'm trying to get to why we can't lose more money. We, we know how much money lap swimming will lose, and non-competitive swimming would be lap swimming. Did anybody know?
You don't know that, that's what we're gonna talk about.
Does anybody know that South Whidby has a non-competitive swim team? Probably not, 'cause it doesn't work. So, non-competitive, there's nobody that's dedicated to it. It doesn't have very many participants. N-WAC didn't lose twenty or thirty-thousand dollars a year. The five-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-dollar-six-year levy passed only because of N-WAC. The same with other programs.
Dog park, water aerobics.
N-WAC, any of them. Because to get to the sixty percent threshold, you can't lose any one group of people. And all previous boards here have did their best to represent the entire community as a whole, not just old people. The one thing that I will never be able to get past, politically incorrect to say that too, I, I don't know, people older than me, fine. When I heard a, when I heard a commissioner say that the people she talks to wonders why in the hell we're paying for people, for kids to swim, then I overheard her admit that, well, she's really only talked to four or five people about it because she doesn't like talking to people that disagree with her. I've looked at public records requests after public records requests. There's no emails from people that don't support N-WAC, other than Bill Walker, a disgruntled former director.
Commissioner Fort.
There we go, with the obfuscation and belittling and...
I know.
Anyway.
That wa- that was encouragement.
Oh, it was.
For somebody they support that wasn't...
I do not feel that all other youth sports programs in the district are any less competitive, useful, or beneficial than N-WAC, just because they don't have a full-time paid coaching staff. I'm done.
Um, I, I don't, I don't know if that was me that you were talking about, saying that I don't like talking to people that don't agree with me. I have talked to many people in the community, and I have yet to meet somebody that is not an N-WAC parent. I've gotten three emails from non-N-WAC parents that supported N-WAC.
Half the people here have told you they're not an N-WAC parent. That's a lie. Half the people here have told you that they're not.
Point of order, it is not a lie.
Look out there. Yes, it is, look out there.
You're not allowed to interrupt. You're not, you can't call people liars.
How many people aren't parents? I like to see, hey, shh.
We aren't representing only old people. I represent all the people of the district. And just because you don't agree with me doesn't mean I'm not right. Commissioner Singleton?
I already, I already went.
Okay, you don't want a second turn? We're, we're done.
Oh.
I didn't have anything else to say about this.
I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Commissioner Frosch?
Yes, um, non-competitive is a joke. It's a joke. I mean, that's why we give, start giving kids, uh, participation trophies. What is, what is a participation trophy? Oh, my kid is in baseball, or football, or whatever. They participated, so they deserve an award. That's what non-competition means. Everybody deserves an award. When these kids grow up, guess what's gonna happen? They're gonna fall flat on their asses because they don't have any competition. Guess what? Real world is competition. Get over it. You don't have competition, I feel sorry for the youth now. That's all I gotta say.
Okay. Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
No.
Commissioner Fort, you have anything else? I don't have any problem with just going forward to looking at alternatives and talking about a recreation swim team. I think that's a, a good idea. Anyway, it's been moved and seconded that we have the executive director prepare alternatives for a recreation swim team program in 2018 for presentation by the September regular meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
I'm staying.
Then the ayes have it, and we will do a by-name vote. Commissioner Frosch?
Nay.
Commissioner Singleton?
Aye.
Commissioner Fort?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Present.
And the chair, Commissioner Holly, votes aye. All right, we are finished with the business at hand. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, we are unanimously adjourned at 5:54 PM.